We're good? All right, thank you. Then I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this regular, uh, special meeting of the Board of Education and invite everyone to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, as this is a special meeting, the agenda is fixed. So we're gonna move right into approval of our July eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Maggie, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Kim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Audience of citizens, you have anyone with us in person or online who wishes to address the board? Okay. Patricia? Um, all right, then we'll keep moving. New business, uh, the only item of new business this evening is the appointment of an athletic director slash dean of students. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Britton to
Thank you, girl.
Introduce us.
Uh, so I'm very excited to introduce somebody. So if you look in your Google Drive, you should have a snapshot of, um, our candidate's CV. Right now, oh, but Sarah, can you take a look at it? Sarah, I know you had some trouble looking at, I'm curious, was the Google Drive all?
It was totally fine. We just didn't get an email giving us the link.
Oh, okay, so it was all there.
It's all there.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have any, any technical issues. Um, okay, so the candidate is there. Now, before I talk about the candidate, um, I'd love to invite, um, Kate and Mike to come to the podium to talk about the process we used because I was incredibly impressed with what Mike and what Kate put together, which is similar to the process we've used with, um, leadership positions in the past, but it had a really cool twist on it at the end that involved some focus groups. And I'd love it if Kate and Mike explained the process, explained how the candidate moved through that process and the many different stakeholders who had the opportunity to ask questions, vet the candidate, and ultimately which led us to tonight. And then Kate certainly say a little bit about Jeff, but then I would love the opportunity to introduce him and have him answer any questions that the board members may have, so.
Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna talk basically about the process in general. Okay, we'll get a little bit more into specifics before we specifically talk about Jeff. But, you know, heading into this, I, I'd say it's fair to say that we were on the same page with how we wanted it to run. And in general, we wanted to make sure that obviously it was objective, obviously it was fair. But then Dr. Britton, you kind of just hit on this. We also wanted to make sure that we set up a structure that enabled as many people as possible to not just see it and be a part of it, but also share their insights with us. So this process in terms of when the job was posted and we started kind of going through applications and looking for specifically on paper, one, who has their own I two certifications? Obviously, that was kind of red flag if they didn't. And then two, who has some coaching backgrounds? Um, and that was really, it was really the two things that when Kate and I took the sixty four applicants that applied for this job and got it down to about thirty five, those are the two things that we said, okay, if they don't have these, they're out of contention. And then from there, we kind of put in place different protocols. First committee that we had was a screening committee that was made up of Kate, myself, another administrator, and Sarah McLachlan, that were there in the core of the location, and then we had four other Portland secondary staff members. We spent a few hours right at that table where you guys are sitting, sitting through those thirty five applicants. And one of the cool things about that is, you know, we had a protocol in place, but we also left it up to the people on the committee, you know, use that as a resource. Um, and we also said at the end, there's no magic number that we're looking for. If we go through these thirty five and they're all incredible and we want to get rid of them more, then let's do it, right? But we ended up coming to a number that was realistic, bit of a heavy lift, but definitely realistic. And that led us to the second portion of this process, which was our interview day. And that was once again made up of Kate, myself, other administrators, Bob Shea, Joe Santa Vanir, and then beyond that, we had Jenny Bell and we had three other Portland secondary staff members. That was two very full days of interviews. Um, and the benefit of how that was set up is that it wasn't just Kate and I debriefing afterwards. We got a lot of in-depth opinions and insights from everybody on that committee. And we moved forward with the candidates that we really thought were going to, one, be the most impressive to the next subgroup and the next subcommittee, but also to, based on what we were looking for in Portland, based on what we were looking for at Portland Middle School, Portland High School, what we had heard about from our staff, um, we knew that the candidates that we moved forward to build for that. And then what Charles was talking about, and I would love to take credit for this, I can't, cause Kate's here and it was her idea. You know, we started having that conversation of what kind of performance task would we want to do? What are we going to get out of that? And Kate said, well, what about focus groups? So we had three different focus groups and, and, you know, obviously when you're talking about stakeholder groups, all of them are critical, getting that many from each stakeholder group was a very unique experience for me. This is the first time that I have been, um, a part of hiring an administrator as an administrator myself. So seeing the way that we went through it, I think the value that not only I got out of it, but everybody who was a part of it got out of it, uh, was pretty, pretty incredible. Uh, we had three focus groups, we had three administrators, one with each focus group. So one focus group was made up of secondary students who I was with as, uh, candidates recycling through. The second focus group was made up of coaches who Tracy Graff and Jenny Bell were with as the candidates were going through. And then the third focus group was made up of secondary parents, that's who Kate were with. I think the fascinating thing for that is, obviously, if you ask a seventh grader what they're looking for in a dean of students, that answer is probably going to vary from what a senior is gonna say, and it's definitely gonna vary from what a coach and a parent is gonna say. We were actually able to take all of that insight and debrief not only as separate groups, but then all together. Um, and what that did is it, it allowed Kate and me to not just take into account like what we are looking for in a future colleague, but it also got us to get down to the specifics of, this is what a coach is looking for, this is what a teacher is looking for, and then most importantly, this is what the students are looking for. Um, and, you know, from there, Kate will go into a little more detail, but I think you're gonna see that we came forward with hands down the best candidate. And I would just say that, you know, for me specifically, this process was very eye opening. It was a long time from the time that Kate and I started sitting through, it was probably the beginning of July. We just had the focus groups last Wednesday. So start to finish, it was over a month. Obviously, it's necessary to take this kind of position and take it that seriously. But being able to have that many people, that many groups of stakeholders and that much insight into what we need and what we want in Portland was a pretty cool experience. So all I can go into a little more detail.
Thank you, Mike. Um, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
One of the things I'd like to highlight about the process we followed was the opportunities for feedback. Um, it should be, I was, I was so pleased, um, in this process and it, and it worked, it worked wonderfully that we didn't turn anyone away who wanted to be a part. Uh, when you have just hiring committees, sometimes you end up realizing you can't have thirty people on a hiring committee and you need to, you need to make some hard decision, which often leads to people feeling excluded and not having a process. So this was a completely open process, all the kids who wanted to come, all the parents and all the coaches who wanted to come and be a part of it. Um, and I think our average group size was eight to fifteen, um, which was, which was wonderful. Throughout the paper screening, which was the first layer, we used a, we had a, Mike and I had a, a rubric that Mike had designed that talked about, um, different qualities in a leader. Um, we also, due to the enormity of the candidate pool, really boiled it down to would really like to interview, might want to interview, definitely don't want to interview. And though that sort of one, two, three protocol is what helped us make our decision to the hiring committee, um, as they moved to the interview committee, um, which was sixteen, which is a lot for two days. Um, we had fourteen interviews that were held. And then after that interview process, we held a group debrief with the committee. Um, and that's where we narrowed it down by group, group conversation and consensus building to, um, our three finalists. Our focus group feedback, we had a half an hour scheduled at the end of each group. So I sat with the parents who had seen all three candidates and got their feedback. Um, I will, I will tell you that it was, it's interesting to me, the questions they asked the candidate gave me tremendous insight into what's on parents' minds. And I think that was very true with students and certainly it was with coaches. Um, we're gonna have to figure out a way to open the school over Christmas break. That was a huge thing. Uh, the other thing we did too is we made the feedback anonymous as well. And I was especially thinking about this with kids. Um, we allowed them to send us their feedback by email that evening. Um, and so that actually sets me up for what I'd like to share with you about this candidate. Um, Camilla White is a sophomore, a rising sophomore, and she volunteered to participate, came willingly and wrote us wonderful feedback on each of the candidates. So I'd like to share what she said about Mr. Marina, and this is to quote, "Mr. Marina, I absolutely loved him. He seems like the perfect candidate for this role. He was talkative, kind, and very enthusiastic for this position. He expressed interest in sports and academics, stating that student athletes are students first, and he wants to help students achieve academic success first and then reach their athletic goals. He showed lots of interest in school spirit, which as a student senator, which is what Camilla is, and a former class officer, I think it is extremely important. It helps improve morale in students and encouragement in athletics. One thing that he circled back to quite a few times was creating relationships with students. He planned on doing this with attendance specifically, whether that be at sporting events or musical. He was more than dedicated to support any and all PHS and PMS students. When asked about dealing with student to student altercation, he answered that diffusion of the situation and hearing each side of the problem is key to solving these types of problems. With a role as big as this one, being able to diffuse situations with class inefficiency is so important. Knowing how much he cares for our students, I feel incredibly confident in his ability to succeed in this role."
Wow.
Nice.
That says it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Kate, hold on one second, just a question. There was one step in the process that Mike, you told, that was the reference check process.
Yes, Mike did the reference check.
Mike, can I give us a quick heads up on, on how that goes? It's very important, it's actually statutory required process?
Yeah, so obviously, I mean, when we're hiring anybody, once we use the point where we're saying, okay, we want to move this person forward to Dr. Britton, we have to then, you know, do our most important homework, which is checking in with their former or current supervisors. I, I think I was telling, um, Kate and Joe Sanne near this, but this was the first time that I've done a reference check where both of the references literally told me the exact same thing. You know, the questions are how long you know them professionally, um, what are some things that they can, you know, do to continue to improve? What are their strengths? If you were hired for this position, would you hire this person? The intriguing thing was when I asked the question about Jeff's rights to the two references, they both said the fact that he is genuine, the fact that he has shown everybody that he consistently wants to learn. And ironically, they both said not just in his professional life, but in his personal life as well. Um, and then beyond that, you know, the fact that he's so good with kids. So I think walking away from that, you never want to hang up the phone from a reference call and be like, oh, and that's definitely not what I walked away from. I walked away even more confident hearing the same thing from both of those reference chefs.
And Mike and Kate, um, Jeffrey is your recommendation, correct?
At the end.
Absolutely.
All right. Jeff, come on up, I'm gonna embarrass you now, bud. So Jeff went through all that and then he had one more interview with me. So, so I met with, with Jeff, um, after speaking with Kate and Mike and getting all of this feedback about uh, each stage of the process, the paper screening, the interview, the focus groups and the reference checks. Um, I sat down, I had a pretty good sense of who he is, I looked over his application and CV very carefully and I think we had, had a great conversation. So a couple of things I want to highlight about Jeff, Jeff that stood out to me, and you can see it in his CV if you can access it online, and I know Dave, you have the paper copy. First, he's an English teacher, right? That he understands the dynamics that happen in a classroom, how much effort and time teachers put into designing high-quality lessons for students, and of course, how much time students put into learning that material to me is essential. That, that he understands that, and he also understands, being a teacher, what type of support he needs from administrators to be successful and what type of support students need from administrators to be successful. That insight is critical to this position because he's going to be working in the background to make sure students are in a place where they can be felt well, welcoming, warm, have agency and support students, but also support teachers in, uh, in that space that the teachers work within. So his, his classroom experience is exceptional and, and I, I lean into that first. Second, in his role of dean of students, you'll notice in that application, two things really stood out to me. One, his experience as a school climate specialist in New Britain, where he worked hand in hand with administrators to promote attendance and to make sure all of those things are happening in the school that makes it a warm and inviting place for students to be. He is a school climate specialist and that experience we will benefit from greatly. And then the second thing is his training in and tra, is a trainer of restorative practices. As we all know, around this table, the board here adopted a new school climate policy last October. We have to implement it July one. We spent a lot of time this summer in our leadership retreat, unpacking it, figuring out what this means, how it is changing, what we have to do. We have a new school climate specialist, as you know, Chuck, is gonna be integral to that part of it. We are certainly gonna be able to lean into his experiences as a school climate specialist and as a restorative practices trainer. So in his role of dean of students, those skill sets, I'm very, very interested in learning from him about. And then finally, as the athletic director, you'll notice in his CV, um, Jeff was an elite athlete. He was a division one football player, holds several records, was a three-year captain of a division one program in Connecticut. Remarkably impressive, I even asked him, he had some aspirations of going to professional level. Um, talk me through why he didn't do that, and for our sake, I'm glad he didn't. It sounds like, um, there was, there was some chances that he might, you know, be, have been on Monday Night Football one day, but it sounds like, you know, some, some things blew in our direction and then, and he's with us today. His experience as an athlete and as a coach, I think, make him perfectly positioned to be an athletic director. In addition to his experience working at the Quinnipiac to learn, to round out his administrative credentials, and he's a very, he's already worked, begun working with someone named Paul Mengold, who I have the most amount of respect for at CAS and learning all of the legalities and, um, those things that come with running a sports program and keeping us in, in fine, fine shape. Um, he is the, the, I think, the model candidate on paper. The other thing I just want to mention, and I don't want to embarrass him too much. One of the things that really impressed me about, about Jeff and his family, so I'll, I'll embarrass. He strikes me as incredibly committed to his family. He went above and beyond to talk to me about how much, of course, he loves his wife, his beautiful children who are here, but how much his family meant to him and, um, you know, all of those things that, that it just was, was really nice to hear that aspect, which translated to, the sense I got from Jeff is that he's really looking to come to a place with a community feel and help build that sense of family and that sense of pride and that sense of community that comes from that. I'm very excited to introduce you to, to Jeff and he's here to answer any questions that, that you all might have. Otherwise, he does come with my full recommendation.
Well, thank you, Charles. Nice to meet you, Jeff.
Nice to meet you for sure. I have a question, cause I'm intrigued. I, I read the application that Charles loaded up and, um, um, your path to Portland Middle School, High School is kind of intriguing as an English teacher and, you know, all of the steps that you took. You have a degree in criminology as well, is that? So was that your goal originally to?
Originally, yeah, so I come from, uh, I mean, police, back then, my father was a thirty year police officer. My brother's a current chief of police in Britain. Uh, I have two great uncles that were police officers in Britain.
So it's in your DNA.
Police officer, um, another uncle that was in Middletown, uh, Middletown captain, he was police chief at Central after I left. Uh, he's now retired now. Come from that background. Come from that background, that's kind of what I gravitated towards. Something I was looking to pursue while trying, while playing football at CCSU. After that, I met my beautiful wife, and in that meantime, I was working as a, you know, behavior specialist in Britain. She convinced me, make this a career. I love working with students. I love trying to help people better themselves and grow. She gets the credit. It starts my career path.
Well, after all of the hurdles that you've had to pass to get to this point, you should have a red carpet tonight, honestly. But I'm, I'm very impressed, and Charles hit all the things that I looked at. The football playing that you did, restorative practices, school climate. And, and all of it, I'm hearing relationships, 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 because that's really.
You create a community like me, my wife, we, I mean, we're very community-oriented, that's all.
He's wonderful.
Remind all of you here, the initial feeling we got throughout this entire process was everyone here cares about me. Cares about how their wellbeing. We first called after my first round of interviews. Your principal said, she called me and said, she called me and said, you know, try me, walk me through what the life of an ADN looked like. Just gotta just get an idea of feeling and obviously first that's how does your wife feel? How does your family feel? And same thing, Ms. Wilson gave the same exact thing. People-oriented portion of this community ethic is, I credit all of you, you can build something very special. And what drew me to this, this community was that, driving around, everyone was extremely nice, just, it's very warm and welcome. Me, my, me, my wife really appreciate that, so we thank you for this entire process.
Well, you have my blessing, so.
Steve, two big questions.
My only comment is to pointing out the obvious is that athletic director, I've heard from prior ones, that it's a lot of commitment above and beyond the normal day. And that's probably something that's different. I know you're a direct, um, coach. That's one sport. This is all sports. You're kind of overseeing, so you have any concerns with that?
As far as overseeing that or?
As far as a time commitment, I mean, nights and weekends.
So me and my wife, we've had several conversations regarding time. She's an educator as well. She works at DC Goodwin, so we are fully aware of the time commitment. And we don't, when we had our discussions and, you know, her main thing was she wants to make sure idols, okay? And the thing is, when I look at the idea of sports and Apple School and, you know, that time, timeframe, you I think looking at it from that lens is, is a little bit, little bit difficult because again, the ultimate goal is to see student athletes succeed. And putting your time placement on there or time commitment on that is something I wish to do or want to do. I want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be successful. My wife just, just is agreement on that. We had our conversations. So the time commitment, obviously, from that lens, yes, it is time, you know, time committed profession. But looking at it from the lens of, I want everyone to, yeah, every student athlete get what they need to succeed is, that's something I'm.
Should we ask you to leave him? Should we check up with him? Say, should we ask you to step down? Maybe we'll check with her.
We are, we are always this open and, you know, our conversations about all time. I appreciate that question, but we've had that conversation.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that's, that's, I had a job once where I had to travel an ungodly amount of time back and forth. And, and it wears on you after a while, so you always want to be aware of the external issue, you know.
Hi Jeff, I'm Sarah. I was curious if you could tell us a little bit more about the Satellite Career Academy and how that differs from other environments that we might be familiar with.
The academy itself is a school for overage uncredited students. So we looked at, this is back two thousand and fourteen. My principal at the time, he was at the high school, he was leaving the Great Fifth Year Academy. I was the dean of the tenth grade. It was not, not administrative, so I was just working, and would be an A P at that time. He wanted to create a, a school that would chart the students that fell with regrets, that were falling behind in credits, had no really good solid chance at graduating. He wanted to open up a program to service those students. And it was definitely a challenge to, you know, to create something like that. He undertook this, and, you know, he came to me, the, the first post position at that time, and so I'm making this position, if you mind, would you mind to join him? And I valued him as a person, and I valued the, the idea of, okay, yes, there is a, there was a problem. There was students that fall with regrets. You know, when I was reflecting on it, a lot of times, you know, those were my friends when I was growing up, you know. Some, you know, after sophomore year or after freshman year, they just stopped showing up. And, you know, finding out that disconnection comes from various parts of, of their own personal life. It also comes from some of the difficulties that found in school and, you know. That career academy, I think, is probably one of the biggest positives, you know, schools in the brain. They provided a service for students. Brought in a lot of good people there. And again, the focus of it was to provide a, obviously a rigorous education, but also provide them chance to relationship build with students that were so disengaged. And we've seen such good things. I've, I've learned so much, and partly is that, that being at that school made me want to be in education. Stay in education.
I'm very impressed, and I think you're a great candidate.
My, my only real question, I mean, I completely agree, and I, I just would love to hear more about your experience as a school climate specialist over the last year and your experience, your background in restorative practices as a trainer. How do you, you know, that's all, that's all really exciting for us to read about. And I would love to hear a little bit about how you envision that being part of how, how that will impact your role as, as Dean of Students.
So the first thing, when any climate specialist is involved in any sort of restorative practice, you have to build connections and relationships. That's the building blocks, the fundamental aspect of restorative practice. And so in order to do that, again, it, it is having conversations with students. It is establishing a sense of trust, fairness, consistency. There are expectations involved, and expectations are clearly, you know, aligned and laid out, and those are important because those expectations are going to help build fairness, the consistency, and accountability that you're going to hold students to. So in my experience as a climate specialist over the last year, the goal we, I set out with, with our climate team at the time, and I worked in with our principal, Joe, and was, okay, let's, and SCA by design helps with that as well, but we, our ultimate goal was make sure we're talking, reaching out to kids, make sure we're reaching out to the students, we're having conversations. And these aren't like, hey, coming with me for five minutes, I want to talk to you. These were walking through the halls. Hey, how's it going? Have informal conversations about their lives, you know. They're playing a sport, have conversations about the spirit. If they're getting ready to start a job, or if they already started learning about the kids and establish those connections. Those have led to growth in the relationship between us and students, but also relationship between students and school. You know, when we looked at survey data from our last year, we, we realized that a lot of students felt comfortable coming into the doors of this, and that's, that's really the building block. If anything, you try to do with climate, school, planning. And it's also easy, it's even easier for me to do it. My wife is obviously, she works in, like I said, she works in school, she's restorably trained, so me and her, we have conversations all the time about things like that, you know, bouncing ideas off one another, so the work doesn't really stop when I leave the building. We kind of bunk a little bit. We share ideas, and, you know, we really look forward to, you know, tho- those type of, of interactions.
I really appreciate hearing you talk about building relationships with students, and it's, it strikes me that that's what, that's what Kate was referencing, that the student feedback was by and large from the students who participated too. I just really appreciate that.
I may, I'd say, I've said to the coaches meeting, the philosophy that I learned through football, through a coach that I had, you know, players, we can interjingle with students. Kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you know. And that lived with, that stuck with me since my, my time at, at playing football at Central till, till now. That I live my life by, and I think that's very good.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. I had a follow-up question around, you know, your first year as an administrator, it's, that's a big step, and you will be supported by two absolutely incredible administrators, and we have a phenomenal administrative team in Portland. We're so lucky. But I guess my, my question for you is, are there any other resources or supports or anything that you imagine you will need in order to, to hit the ground running and be successful?
So the first thing in order to successful resource, I mean, is first thing we, we need to do is come in as me, establish those connections. And that, that's my first and foremost, you know, I've, I've had some conversations already about trying to make sure I'm in, in as much as I can. That conversation's actually great about, about that same topic. So in order to look at, in order to go in and truly address what is needed, it's, it's first listening to what is around, and who, who is here and getting their, their feedback, and, you know, student feedback and things like that. So in order to really get a good idea of what is needed, it's, it's first, you know, being a part of the school and listening and seeing and getting a good feel for what, what is around and from theirs, and, you know, maybe discuss, we create ways that are actually going to provide that, what we found in that data, what we found is going to provide that, that good resource for the students. That's, that's definitely the first and most, yeah. You came in with something already and say it's, that's already provided, or you came up with something that doesn't really connect. You know, you gotta be able to know your students first, and then once you do that, then you're going to be able to provide them the exact resources that they need.
No other questions from board members? No. Okay. Uh, if there are no more questions, I believe we need a motion from the board to move forward with this hire.
I make a motion that we, uh, point Jeffrey Marino as the Dean of Students and Athletic Director for Portland Middle and Portland High School, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Thank you, Meg. Is there a second? Second advice, Sarah. Any further discussion? Nope. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She passed the unanimous, congratulations, yes.
Come here, guys. You gonna come too? You coming up? That still worked out. Someone might fit. And this one stepped that way. Smile, guys, smile.
You know the routine.
Dairy Queen way up the road, I think you should go.
All right. Well, that's very exciting. Congratulations, Jeff, and thanks for, thanks for jumping on board. We're happy to have you.
We'll talk to you later.
All right, and thank you, Kate, and thank you, Mike, for all your work in implementing this incredibly involved process over the last month, this hiring process. Really appreciate how thorough you both were in your leadership and getting us to a great place. This is exciting to start the year with a, a complete team. All right, we're going to move on to old business. The only item of old business on the agenda tonight is a second reading on Board of Education Policy five one three one point eight one, which is, if you recall, the new electronic devices policy. So hopefully everyone had a chance to read it through again. We didn't have any additional feedback since the first time we read the policy, but if there are questions or, you know, anything, happy to hear it. I don't know, you know, Meg or Charles, if there's anything you want to say about the policy?
I, I would only, Kate, Kate's here too. I, we're grateful that we're able to get it in before the school year starts. I know, I know that Kate is moving forward already with language in her handbook and communication saying pending board approval. But I do think that this is an important step, and I'm, I'm hoping Kate will be able to implement the policy with fidelity, and, and I know that she's spent a lot of time reviewing this and thinking about it, and it will be a change here at the high school. I think our other schools are, are well positioned to do this. That has, has been standard practice pre-K to eight. This will be different at the high school, but it is, it is absolutely the right one. Kate, would you agree with that?
Absolutely do agree with it. You know, I think it is, it is so clear to all of us, based on research and based on just what we see in society today, that we need to get humans talking to one another again. I do think it will be a learning curve for some, especially our upper classmen, who are, who are not used to that. We've put in a pretty strict discipline policy around phone usage. Not to be, not to be unkind, but to kind of rip the Band-Aid off and get, and get, get us through this transition. I think it will be a little bit rocky. But I also think that people will understand, and anecdotally, when I had kids that dropped their phones, they often come back and say to me, yeah, I feel so much better not having it with me. I get to think about what I was doing for a minute. And so I think, I think we're insufficient, so communicated very, very clearly to the student bodies as early as June. But I think having your finalized policy will be very helpful when, when the challenges do occur. And I think there will be challenges down the road, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll work through that. I think, I think we're ready. I think the students are poised. They understand the value of instructional time. And I think they understand, I hope, that this is, this is good for them. And that is, that is our mission in, in going phone free, as my new logo on my new back-to-school T-shirt say, off and away during the day.
I was going to ask, what has the initial feedback been?
Overwhelmingly supportive from any adult. Every parent, every student, teacher I've spoken to. Mixed reviews from kids, more along the line of, are we really doing this? Is this really going to happen? I anticipate ninety percent of our students are going to comply with this policy. They're going to put, and they don't, they can have it often in their locker, they can have it often in the bottom of their backpack. I know there's some kids that were nervous in the event of emergency about not having it near them, which I think is a sign of the societal times. They can leave it in their car, they can leave it at home. I recognize they need it for non-outside the school day to arrange drives and all of those things. And I think we'll have, we will probably have about five to ten percent of students, we're going to have to do this the hard way. But I think they'll all get better. I really do. I think we're going to have to realize, you know, and, and quite honestly, have their parents be a part of it. Because what I'm asking kids to do is, if you're caught with your phone the first time, if it comes to the office, you get it at the end of the day. If it happens again, mom and dad have to come get it. And I, I think that's going to be a conversation, and a few of the parents, I was like, fine, keep it. That argument you're living on. So, but I think that's necessary to make the culture shift. And my anticipation is that once kids realize and get through a few days without it, it's going to become the norm. And I'm hoping they'll enjoy, they'll enjoy walking through a noisy cafeteria again. Because really, since COVID, I haven't. I walk through, people say your kids are so well behaved. They're, they're sitting there on their phones, and, and that's, that's not what I'm, I'm looking for, I'm looking for engaged kids. That's what we want to do.
And I would just say. And I, and I would just say that it was a very thoughtful process, starting a year ago. Conversations prior to that, and this takes into account the individual needs of students who may have to have a phone for monitoring medical issues, or if they are using it as a speech kind of thing. So, so it's not going to be taken, put it away, we're not going to talk about it. It's, it's really a very thoughtful policy. I think it'll be easy to implement. And you're right, there's going to be some kids that just want to push the envelope and see what, what happens when they do, and that's okay. Then they will, they're, yeah.
They're supposed to be challenging.
And they should, absolutely. So I, I recommend that we pass it tonight, that it, that it is good policy.
I do just have one curious, um, clarifying question about under, when it's going to be used for instructional purposes. And it does say about, um, the classroom teacher will get approval of the building principal. Are you seeing that as a blanket, oh, yeah, all year long in chemistry, if you need to use it, you can, or a, hey, tomorrow, we need to use it for this?
So, so a couple of, of angles to that. One is we do have small group of students who rely on their personal device for something like medical monitoring. That goes without saying. I also think there's the second subset of students who have used their phones for relaxation apps, a little bit of music, translation from, for our newcomers. All of those things can be produced without a smart device. We, you know, there are music, you know, going back to the iPhones. There are, there are translation apps. So certainly looking to find non-smart devices to fill the bucket of those needs. Every so often, a project comes along, sometimes authored by my colleague to my right. Where they want to use, so they want to take and they're developing marketing and they're developing social media platforms and they're developing, and they need pictures and they need interactions. And we don't have that set up for thirty kids. So that would be an incident of on next Thursday, can the kids who have their phones bring them in? So we can use them to do this. And, and I would approve those on a case by case basis, which is what we did this year. Miss Cass, you're.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, great question. Are there any other questions for Kate while we have for about the, about the policy or how it will be implemented at the high school?
I feel like this question came up and I don't recall what the answer was. If school trips to say New York City were included in the instructional day.
We're going to let them take them when there's a, when there's a reason to have them. And school trip to New York City would absolutely be a reason for them to have them.
And have access to them.
And have access to them, yes. Because that's how we keep traffic. Yes. And, and I don't look, I don't look to try to implement this at this time with any kind of extracurricular. You know, if they're at practice, if they're at a game, I mean, that may be up to their coach to have them put their, their phones away. But we're going to start with, with belts about, with the exception of something like that, when you need it for safety.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you foresee any, you allow someone to have a medical issue, a medical need? You foresee other students saying, well, how come they get to use their phone? And then you have to discuss the reason why?
I would never discuss the actual reason why they would get, they would get a somewhat variation on the theme of fair is not equal. And we give everybody what they need here to be successful.
Any other questions?
No.
For, for Dr. Britton or for Ms. Lawson? Well, all right. Well, if there are no more questions or comments, this is a second reading. So we are looking to take action on this policy tonight so that our administrators can begin the school year with this policy in place to support them. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board that we approve the P, the policy five one three one point eight one for electronic devices for students and.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Seconded by Kim. Thank you, Kim. Any discussion?
Can you pull the sample policies language off the bottom of the draft?
Say that again?
There's a footer that says sample policies are distributed for demonstration purposes only.
Yeah, that'll, that'll get pulled off and it'll get, so when, when, once we adopt it, it'll get cleaned up with like our approval date at the bottom and then, yeah, that, so the currently there's dates at the bottom that say policy adopted and those are cave dates.
Those are cave dates, right.
So we would, we would replace that footer with our own information. Yeah, any other?
And the only other thing I would say is that we're expecting our teachers, the adults in the building, to also model this as well, that cell phone should be put away discreetly if they need to use them. But, but they would be modeling that for our students.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. I think it's perfect.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We have an electronic devices policy.
Thank you, Kate, for the due diligence. It's been a long time coming.
Yeah, thank you, Kate, for your work on that, your support with that and, and to Chuck as well, who worked with us closely on the policy committee to get this to a good spot. That is all that we have on our agenda tonight. So we, with, if there's a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned at six fifty two. I hope everybody has a great evening.